Okay, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock on Wednesday evening and I want to call the order of meeting. The Board of Selectmen and our Building Commissioner and Town Administrator related to a public information meeting on the demolition of Henry's. So this is quite an exciting day. I want to thank all of you who have come out here in attendance tonight to brave this tough weather, to learn a little bit more about what is going to be happening logistically over the next couple weeks and months related to the demolition of the old Henry's ice cream plant. So before we get started, I do want to thank all of the boards and committees and previous Board of Selectmen for all the time that they put into this to get it to where we are right now. It's been an arduous process, but one that finally has a light at the end of the tunnel. And I also want to thank the Conley family, too, for the role that they played in helping us get to this, get to the finish line here. And so with that, I'm now going to turn the meeting over to our Town Administrator, Michael Dunahy, and our Building Commissioner, Joe Prondak, to give you an outline of expectations and logistics before we get to a question and answer period following that. So, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Dunahy, Town Administrator. Joe Prondak is our Building Commissioner. We're also joined here by Stephen Conley from 131 Elliott LLC and Larry Hurley from RAS, which is going to be doing the demo work. Just a little bit of recent history. There was some demolition work that was done about five or six weeks ago, and I think the buzz on social media was that the building was coming down. That was actually some asbestos abatement work that was being taking place, preliminary work to get done before we could get to this point. So, logistically, we sat down a week ago, Monday, February 26th, we sat internally. Aaron Egan from our Board of Health was here, John King, the Chief of Police, several members from our Public Works Department, Jack Grant from Milton Fire Department, and Joe, and members from his team, sat down with RAS to go over the plan. The Building Commissioner will get into it, but basically it's going to be a two-phase plan. We are, in a parallel world, we're working with the T on a force account agreement with the diversion as to how that last piece, and Joe's going to go through specifics on the second phase of the demolition. But I'm going to turn it over to Joe, but we had a very robust dialogue on February 26th. The concerns of the Board of Health surrounded the rodent and the abatement of those rodent and any inactivity in and around that building that will be caused by the excavation. Obviously, the Police Department, Fire Department had their public safety concerns, and Building Commissioner can go through specifics as to how the project is going to work and what our expectations are and some of our timelines. So without further ado, I'll send it over to Joe Prondak, our Building Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here.
Excuse me, Joe, I apologize, but could you just speak into the microphone? We have a lot of people who are going to be watching from home tonight due to the weather, and that's going to go on through the TV, so if you could, that would be great.
Carry it, you think?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, maybe I'll pull this over. So, the historic moment has arrived, and we're all looking forward to it. So we've spent a lot of time in concert with RAS, the demolition company, and laying out a plan exactly, and the T as well, laying out a plan as to how this building is to come down. And basically, it is a two-phase operation. If you look at the photographic image over here, so what the T has done, what's been decided is that everything below this red line is going to come down first. And what that does is it opens up an area so that the demolition company has a better attack plan to tear down the rest of the building that's adjacent to the T. So, on or about April 2nd, we expect the demolition to start at Phase One. So what's going to happen, basically, is we're going to, we have to close down the sidewalk at Elliott Street and Central Ave from the back end of the property all the way over to the T station, and we're going to put in a temporary crosswalk that will put people over to the other side of Elliott Street, so they walk down to where Spree de Vinh was, and then cross to where Tino's is, and they actually have to access the T that way. And so that will begin the demolition of this first part of the building. The first part of the demolition really is going to involve one machine and a few trucks. They're going to, there's a parking lot at the back of the building where the machine will first come in. And basically, they're going to come in this way. There's a portion of the building that's right up against Elliott Street, so that's of grave concern to us. So they're basically going to come in and tear the building down this way and then turn so that when they get to the part that's right up against Elliott Street, they're going to be pulling that in towards the property as opposed to letting anything go out into the street. So this entire process, we expect, so this will be a, basically, an eight-hour day operation six days a week, Monday through Saturday, and we expect this to take place over the course of about five weeks. A little bit of a buffer there. So then, we would shift into Phase Two, which is the demolition along the T tracks. We expect that to take about a week, but this will be a 24/7 operation for about a week. The reason for that is because we need to get it down quickly to minimize the shutdown time for the T, because the T has to shut down, they have to not just shut down the line, but they have to protect all the electronics and other equipment that make up the station, and they have to take down the power lines, the overhead lines that power those trolleys. So that's basically what's going to happen, I think. Just double-check with Larry Hurley from RAS if I missed anything there.
I don't think so, Joe. I think that's pretty accurate. Yeah, the difference being that this portion of the job that starts, there's going to be one machine that's, good-sized machine, but it's not going to be the big machine that's going to take the higher stuff down along the tracks. When we get to that point, we'll bring in what's called a high-reach, which will reach up to the top of these buildings and pull that in safely so it doesn't end up on the tracks as well. And we have to shut the tracks down because the catenary lines that power these trains are actually attached to the building, or approximately, the guy wires that hold them are attached to the building. So that's all going to come down. T's going to shut down and divert from stations by either side, and the building will be taken down with this high-reach from probably the same way, from that end down toward this end. The difference, the only change in this is this building here, which is the white building on the corner of Central and Elliott, the structural members inside that building are big and long, and they go this way. So this building will probably get left out to the end of the structural steel on this side, so we won't be taking it all the way. We'll leave more than 50 feet, those beams are about 65 feet long, so that's going to stay because the high-reach will take those down when you get there, just so that it's But we do plan on bumping this out here, fencing and sidewalk, we're going to put temporary, like Joe said, we're going to put temporary crosswalks in and signage. We'll put signage that blocks the sidewalk close to the end of the property and probably signage up at the last crosswalk on Elliott Street to divert people across further back as well, which may, instead of people walking down to where the T station is down, divert them to the other T station on Elliott Street.
Great. And one thing I think I missed, so we have a portion that's right along Central Avenue. In the beginning of the project, on Phase One, we're simply going to shut down the sidewalk at that, in front of the building on Central Ave, but when this portion of the building comes down, we're probably going to take the parking spaces in one lane of travel in order to accommodate that. We'll still, and then we'll take the parking that's over on the other side so that we can leave two lanes of travel, so that the road remains open. There'll just be no parking for that one-week period on that section of the road. Dust will be controlled by hoses, fire hoses connected to fire hydrants that are needed by the town, and Rodent Control will begin shortly, a couple weeks prior to demolition, probably next week. It'll be done by, so the site's going to be inspected by the Rodent Control person. He'll determine the type of rodents that he may have to bait for. He has a list of the different rats that they typically find, and they will bait the building accordingly and monitor those bait traps over the course of time until the demolition actually starts.
Will the election be online with the Board of Health? And all its monitoring information will be online with the Board of Health?
Yep.
Okay, since people at home probably didn't hear that, the pest control will be online in accordance with the Milton Board of Health, so all of their information will be posted and updated regularly.
Okay. And the final piece, I think, is that there is, all of the hazardous materials, primarily asbestos, has been abated from the entire building. With the exception of one portion of the building that is collapsed and collapsed some time ago, it's unsafe to abate that. So there's several truckloads of debris within that portion of the building that go right into trucks that are lined with plastic and go right to a, so every bit of debris within that collapsed portion goes to hazardous materials landfill.
Joe, just one other small thing. We had talked to the T, we want to make this area as safe as possible during this first phase, and then obviously the second phase. During the second phase, that Central Ave T station will be closed and there'll be buses diverting, but we had talked to the Mass Bay Transportation Authority about possibly making Central Ave a ghost station while they do their work so as to inhibit people, a lot of pedestrian traffic, and direct people to Cape and Milton Village to take the trolley. But they notified us that's one of their busiest stops, and that's not something that they would entertain. So we were trying to keep it as safe as possible and keep pedestrians, you know, away from the area while we construct, but that was, we had no luck with that with the T, and I understand it's one of their busiest spots. So that's why the sidewalks are going to be shut down for so long. There was talk about reopening them when the first phase is done, but I think if we keep, be consistent and just keep them closed throughout the entire, both phases, then we get the building down. Joe, I just want to talk about the trucking and how the trucking's going to take place when, you know, when that first phase is done, and how they're going to come in, and what road they're going to go out, and what type of...
Yeah, so the truck is removed by very large tractor trailers, what we, sometimes what we, probably 100-yard tractor trailers.
Joe, I'm sorry, could you use the microphone again? Thank you.
So the demolition's going to be carted away by tractor trailers capable of holding 100 yards of debris. These are very large, oversized tractor trailers. They're going to come in River Street, come in and go out River Street as opposed to Elliott or Central Avenue. So when they come down River Street, then they'll have to be backed up Elliott Street to get to the site. But one of the advantages of that is that because they're so big, there's one or two trips a day, because it takes a long time to load them, and they handle a lot of debris. So that's one way we keep the truck traffic during the operation to a minimum.
And it probably won't be every day. We're going to have trucks there after we generate enough material to validate bringing trucks in. And we talked to the police chief, we're going to probably put details on when the trucks are coming, we'll give him notice. He'll schedule an officer to come down there, direct traffic for us as they pull up, because they're going to end up backing up Elliott Street, and we're probably going to bring them up into this area up here and back them in beside the building where we're going to start, because we're going to, by then, we'll be in here, and the material that's generated will be down in front of us, turn around with it, load the trucks. It shouldn't be a whole lot of material, and I'm guessing maybe four loads a week to get started after we get a little bit, and maybe a week just to get it ready, or to get enough generated to be ready for the trucks.
And just to add to that a little bit more, the first phase of the construction, although we expect it to take about four or five weeks, the first week or so of that is largely going to be removing building content. And then, the building will be crushed on-site, basically, and then separated into the different materials before, different types of materials, for example, concrete, steel, and wood. So it's separated on-site before it's actually trucked out. So the actual smashing of the building is not the entire five weeks. It's about a two-to-three-week period in the middle of that timeframe of Phase One.
Yeah, so obviously, we can open this up to questions, David, but my office is always available. Once this project gets underway, if anyone sees anything or wants to talk, and, you know, we can do site visits and walk out there with Larry safely, obviously, but anything that goes on in and around this area that becomes cumbersome or you think might be a problem for the neighborhood, please call my office, and Joe or I, or the group of us will go out there and make sure that we take care of it. RAS has been great to deal with throughout this whole process of getting this plan into place. Obviously, we're hoping for no April Fool's storm this year, if we can get started with that first phase and get the project started.
Okay, so we're going to stack questions and answers. So if you'd like to ask a question, if you could come up to this table, sign in, state your name and address before you ask a question, that would be kindly appreciated.
Can I ask a question to start? Joe, could you speak to the issue of noise? And you mentioned Phase Two is going to be 24/7. Could you just talk a little bit about noise and what the immediate abutters, especially the residences, might expect?
Well, I will say this right up front. Tearing down, this is a difficult building to tear down, and there's no gentle way to do it. But what is fortunate is the machines of today are much quieter than what they were of years ago. So the actual running of the machines, I don't think is going to be all that offensive. Probably the most noise will come from actually pieces of the building falling to the ground, and maybe Larry could speak to that a little bit more than I could?
Joe is absolutely right. The machines are a lot quieter now than they have been in the past, and typically, they're below levels that EPA and other people want them to be for noise abatement. The building isn't going to make a whole lot of noise coming down, Joe, I don't think that's an accurate statement. I think it's, because we're not going to crash this thing down, we're going to be taking this down with grapples carefully and piece by piece. Everything gets sorted out as we go, because everything gets recycled nowadays that is recyclable, wood, concrete, metal, and it's just easier to take it down carefully and sort it out as you go than it is to just crash it all into a big pile and try to sort it out afterwards. So we will be taking it down slowly and carefully. It will be quieter that way as well. Once it's on the ground, everything we try to take down into the footprint of the building, it just makes it a lot easier to clean up at the end. So it'll be sorted out in the footprint of the building, to the point where if we have big pieces of steel or something, we may put them out of the building to get them ready to load, but the majority of the material that we're taking down, the demolition debris and concrete and things like that, will be in the basement or in the area of the footprint until we're ready to load it out. I really don't think noise will be an issue until we get to the second phase where we're working 24/7. And I had a concern about that, because the T is adamant that this gets done as quickly as it is possible. I was really a little bit concerned about working 24/7, just because, you know, you have noise, and I really don't want to aggravate neighbors, and it's dark. So we're going to, it's all going to be done with lights, which, again, can aggravate neighbors, but if we have to do that, we have to do that, because it's, you know, it's going to get you guys back in line quicker.
And the one thing we did leave out is that the intended shutdown of the T in the Phase Two operation is basically Memorial Day, starting on the 25th or 26th, 25th of May, and running for seven days out from that, approximately.
That's a question I have for the T, is they're starting us, giving us that on the 25th, but they have a lot of work to do to get ready for us to go ahead and start that action. They have a lot of communications equipment, they have other stuff in that area that's got to be moved before we do the catenary lines, things like that. So I don't know what their schedule is, if they're going to do that prior to, they're actually going to shut down prior to, or what that, how that works, but that's something we may have to address.
Yeah, I think they've got that figured into the schedule, and it'll happen pretty much simultaneously with your operation.
Michael, I have a question on Phase Two, on the T shutdown. Are they going to shut down the whole high-speed line, Matapan to Ashburn, or are we just going to shut down from Central Ave to Matapan? In other words, if someone who uses that regularly, can they still get on at Central Ave and go to Ashburn and then get on?
No, because it's one line from Ashburn. They have, there's no way to turn around a trolley, so they have to shut the whole line down.
I probably should have said that at the beginning. We, myself and Joe and Conley's and RAS met at T Operations in September, and the T talked about how no one in the world wants this building down more than they do. We met on-site shortly thereafter, sometime in later September, and they sent nine different people. They had a power guy, a line guy, a structural engineer. Literally, there were eight or nine people on-site walking through and doing what they need to do to make sure that the T's ready, so. And that process is, whenever the T does a diversion, they do what's called a force account agreement. You have to send them money, and they set that, they send you an estimate what the cost might be to divert the traffic, and that's something that we're still working on, as long as, as well as some of the details that Larry had mentioned. But that is scheduled for Memorial Day weekend, they choose to divert when ridership is down, and they, we were hoping to get in there sometime in late April. They, a lot of people use the trolley now to get to the marathon, they informed us, so that weekend wouldn't be available. So the next holiday weekend and opportunity is, and it fits into the schedule of the Phase One finishing up, so.
Yeah, I just want to follow up just on the actual timing. I think it works out pretty well. You know, we've had some community meetings here on Henry's over the last couple of years, and, you know, there was a great amount of concern from the business owners that should we ever had it done during a holiday week around Christmas or Thanksgiving, it could be problematic for businesses. But Memorial Day, a lot of people seem to go away a lot, which is helpful, I think. So there is some benefit to this, and I think, you know, working 24/7, it's going to be difficult for some of the abutters. We do recognize that, and we're very sensitive to that, but I think it keeps costs down, which is very important, and also expedites the project, so. So I will open it up again now for questions and answers. I'm sure there's people out here in the crowd that do have some questions. If you do, please come up, sign in, and state your name and address.
Use this one?
Yes, please, Peter. Thank you.
You've been waiting a long time for this, Mr. Mullin, a long time.
Peter Mullin, 19 Gaskins Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I wonder if we can find out what portion of the building the asbestos abatement people have not been able to inspect, where that area is in the building, and what, if anything, is going to be done to abate anything that may get in the wind that day. I'd also like to know whether or not Elliott Street is going to be closed at any portion other than backing trucks from Central into the rear portion of the lot.
Okay, so I can speak to the, I can speak to the area that has the collapse, which is, yes, actually.
Mr. Wells has a point.
Maybe I can go up there. So the collapsed portion is right here.
Yeah, the collapsed portion is right here, and it's actually one of the oldest portions of the building. Some of this building was actually built in the 1800s, and it's about a 1,200-square-foot footprint, and it's mostly masonry and wood. It basically housed the locker rooms and some restrooms for the employees. So at the most that would be there, I believe, would be some, possibly some asbestos material in the roofing, which is not what they call friable asbestos. And this is all being done, the DEP has been notified of this, and they may or may not send a monitor down while that happens. They sometimes do that. But the important thing here, so it will be wetted down as it's removed, just with the similar, similar to the dust control operation, but the important thing is that this stuff, all of that debris, be loaded carefully right into a container that's lined with plastic and sent to a hazardous waste materials. And this is, this is a pretty common practice.
Is all the demolition wetted down or just this portion?
Oh, there will be, the whole thing. Dust control is done with fire hoses attached to fire hydrants.
And so that whenever a material is being taken down, it'll be wetted?
Yes.
I believe that there's a hole or a basement in this building, right?
That is correct.
Where's the basement?
The basement is, pretty much the whole building has a basement, except for, of course, the parking garage area that we all see on Central Avenue, and a small portion...
By the loading dock?
By the loading dock, back here. The entire building, though, does have a basement. This project is only taking the building to the foundations at this time. Foundations will come out at a later date.
Well, is the machine that's going to do the demolition, is it going to be able to go out along the existing basement floor?
Yes. So, and Larry could speak to this, but typically, they crush the material into the building and then they drive right on top of that.
It's right there, Larry.
There's a microphone.
Yeah, the section that Joe was talking about is that small square up top there where the asbestos is. Demolition work, when the DEP approves the AWP, Alternate Work Plan, because we're going to be loading this with machines directly into polyline trailers, these are double-lined 10-millimeter liners, which are thick polyliners that fit these trailers, it'll all be wet as it happens, there'll be asbestos, people lining these trails and asbestos people running the hoses, and I will have to shave because I have to wear a respirator and that's, I'm licensed asbestos super. But yeah, that all gets done when we get enough room and after the DEP has approved the AWP that's in front of them now. And they're probably going to require a monitor, not send them on, they're going to probably require a monitor to be there while it happens. It is, as Joe said, non-friable. There is roofing, asphaltic roofing material which may have asbestos in it, they haven't been able to test it because of where it is, because it's actually the roof that collapsed and a brick wall that's collapsing on the third floor down into the second floor, and it's tipped at a mean angle, and it was that way in 2014 when we first started this process. There's also in that pile transite, which is asbestos concrete board, used on siding for houses and things like that, which, again, is non-friable. So it really doesn't become an issue unless you start grinding it or cutting with saws or something like that. It doesn't get airborne, so that's a good thing. And everything does get wet as we're demolishing the building, everything gets wet. We have dust control with inch-and-a-half fire hoses that we've got approved by, I mean, we have a hydrant and meter and backflow on the hydrant that's been permitted by the City of Milton, or Town of Milton, so that will happen. And as Joe said, over here, this corner of the building, there is a slab-on-grade up to the tall portion on that north end, the slab-on-grade, once we get, we'll take that down first toward Central Street, and then we're going to get, then it drops off into the basement, and where it drops off into the basement, we will crawl the machines down in the basement as we go. So that, because they'll be able to reach everything that we need to reach with our machine to get the first phase done.
Larry, could you answer Mr. Mullin's question about Elliott Street and vehicles blocking?
Yeah, no, there'll be no closures at all, except for when, the five minutes that it takes to back a truck in, that will be it.
You think the trucks will be able to back from Central Avenue in five minutes up the street?
Oh, yeah. They're not going that far, yeah. These are good drivers, and we deal, they deal with this stuff all the time. And if we have, and there'll be a police detail down at the intersection who's going to stop traffic enough so that they can pull up back in.
The timing of these trucks could be important. Currently, around 8:00 in that area, you have 10, 12-car backup on Central Avenue coming towards Elliott Street.
That's very adjustable. We can, as we start doing this, it's going to take four or five days to get this building to the point where we're going to need trucks, and in that four or five days, we can look at the traffic and say, we don't want to be here at 8:00. at the traffic and say, we don't wanna be here at eight o'clock, we wanna be here at 10 o'clock, we wanna be here at 11 o'clock, and we can schedule, if we have enough, if we get the materials ready, we can schedule two trucks, one right after the other, and get them into a timeframe where we're not gonna be interfering with traffic in that big, that much. And they, if they end up on top of one another, we just send them away and tell them, you know, go park somewhere for an hour. Here's my phone number, call me, or I'll call you, give me your phone number, I'll call you when we're ready to bring you in. So it shouldn't be an issue.
Just to follow up to Mr. Mullin's question, that's a pretty common thing with projects in the town, and I'm confident Chief King and his people will be able to recognize immediately when and when trucks should or shouldn't be backing up there, 'cause it just, so many projects each and every day are affected by not only the AM but the PM commute, so I think that's probably already on his radar already before we even start.
We could guard the Phase Two of your project. What holds that wall and the rest of the building up while you're taking down the Elliott Street side?
Everything we take down, we take down to a structural member that leaves the rest of that building integral. So we're not taking, the north end where you have the tall brick, red siding, that whole thing will be left up, and that's all structural steel with tin siding around the top on three sides and brick on the track side. The brick is the scary part, because the brick can fall out, but the brick is an infill between structural steel column, so it should be easy enough when we get there to get up there and with this high reach, which will reach up high enough to go in behind it and push it in, push it in, push it in as we go, so that, but everything is, will be still structurally sound until we get ready to take it down.
But you're expecting the building, once you start demolition, you have a approximately five-week period when you're gonna be taking the building down?
Yes.
And you're expecting the Phase Two to remain in place-
I am.
-for four or five weeks during that time period?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, if I can add-
Is there any bracing, is there anything done?
Nope, don't need.
I can add to that. So the building, the building is not one single building, it is a conglomerate, it's a conglomeration of several buildings that have been built over the years, and we've had this evaluated by a structural engineer, we've walked through it with a structural engineer, and that person, that engineer has been on board with us in developing this plan, so we know that there are portions that will, you could tear down completely around it, and that portion, they are structurally independent. And there will be an engineer, a structural engineer monitoring all of this as this is going on.
So for example, would be, if you were into the center of the building, it's a column line, so there's a column line here, there's a column line at that wall, there's a column line at that wall. The exterior of the tracks is over here. Our 50-foot section is two bays. The two bays are not gonna fall down if you're leaving them and you're taking bays on the other side, nothing's gonna fall down in the middle, unless you grab the wrong thing and you pull it like this. And we've been doing this a long time, we're pretty good at making sure we don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Appreciate your questions.
Hi, I'm Ellen Denoyar, Precinct Two member, and I live on Capen Street. I have, I think, three short questions. One is, when you talk about crosswalks, will there be a crosswalk across Central near where the bike path is, so that people can, when the trial, during the first phase, so that people can go in front of the dry cleaners and cross to get to the station?
So, well, to go through the whole scenario, there is, there'll be a crosswalk up at Elliott Street to keep people off the sidewalk, they'll come down Elliott Street on the side of the plate and Street of Vin, they'll cross here, cross here over to the cleaners, and then walk all the way up. I guess we could add a crosswalk here, but the thought was that they would go to the current crosswalk that's up on the opposite side of the bike, the opposite side of the tracks.
Right, but there's no, as I recall, there was some question, and I think the town had a stop sign removed in front of the dry cleaners?
Mm-hmm.
So there's no stop sign for traffic going northbound on Central?
So the stop, the stop sign that was there, it was put up there erroneously, it wasn't put up by the town, so that's a long story, but it just-
Right, I understand, but I'm just thinking you're gonna have a larger volume of pedestrians having to cross Central Avenue, and it's not really controlled cross, you know, controlled crossing.
The chief did say that he was gonna bring the signage down and put it in the road that where the crosswalks were gonna be, that pedestrians have the right of way.
Right.
I'm sure there's gonna be, Ellen, I'm sure there'll be times on the existing crosswalk that exists there, you'll still be able to use it in Phase One, am I correct? If you, you're talking about crossing Central Ave from the dry cleaners to go across the other side to continue into Dorchester?
Right.
Am I correct? I mean, it won't be-
Yeah, well, the sidewalk all along Elliott Street in Central will be closed, so nobody, nobody will be using this crosswalk.
No, okay, so following your scenario, front of the cleaners, and now I wanna come back over to go to Rite Aid, won't there be times when they won't be working there, you can come back across on that crosswalk, take a right, and then go right into the Rite Aid pocket? Would that, is that answering your question correctly?
But it's not a controlled crosswalk. In other words, there's no stop sign, it's just the crosswalk at the bike path, so it's on the far side of the trolley tracks as well.
Yeah.
So people coming from Milton, going to the trolley tracks, would be crossing where there is no crosswalk before the trolley tracks.
Maybe we can have something temporarily put up-
Yeah, we can talk to the chief about that and have appropriate signage added to that.
That would be great, thank you. So just two other quick questions. One is, back to Peter's question about the basement, because I understand the roof has not been intact for a while, is there water in the basement, and is there any concern about whether that has any hazardous material?
That was, that was an issue once before, and the basement was pumped and trucked off to, that was treated as contaminated water, not necessarily hazardous, and that will be done again.
Okay, 'cause obviously there will be more water-
Yeah.
-tonight, okay. Thank you. And then a third quick question, you mentioned that there will be a structural engineer monitoring the demo. Who's that structural engineer working for?
He works for the developer, the demolition contractor, but it, but he's obligated by the building code to monitor it, and the requirement for that person to be there is a requirement of the building code.
And does that person do reports to you, or?
As necessary. You know, we're gonna be there almost every day as well. So there's, they have to submit an affidavit prior to getting a permit saying that they will be there monitoring the project. If this were a long, you know, six months or five-year project, they would have to submit regular reports, but on a project of this duration, given the fact that we're all gonna be, there's gonna be all eyes on this, I don't necessarily need, see a need for interim reports, there'll be a report at the end, a final affidavit at the end.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Maggie McAdemy, Town Meeting Member, Three, Warren Committee Member. I have two quick questions. The first one is on Phase One, five to six weeks. What are the hours gonna be when they're working?
They're gonna be eight-hour days, Monday to Saturday.
What time? Do they have any specific-
We say, we say eight to five, or seven to five?
I think seven to five.
Seven to five.
Seven to five, seven to four.
Okay. The only other question I have is in regards to the underground storage tanks.
Two hours for lunch.
Anything being done?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Underground storage tanks, you know, the hazardous, big storage tanks. Are you grading only to the, are you gonna just leave them intact there, or are you doing anything?
So this project just involves getting the building down, the foundations and the underground storage tanks will be dealt with on the next, prior to construction, so to speak, of the building.
So they're going to address that issue?
Yeah, yeah, they remain intact and not undisturbed at this point.
But do they plan on taking them out eventually, or?
I would assume, that's a yes.
Thank you.
Hi, David Conant at 152 Elliott. Most of the questions have been asked, but a couple things. First of all, are there any other hazardous materials in there anymore, like in the old air handling systems or refrigeration lines or whatever?
All of that has been surveyed and abated.
Okay, and has anybody checked with the schools about the school buses? I know that there, there's a school bus stop right almost there. I usually am out before the school, but every once in a while I see the kids, so I know that there's a school bus stop somewhere in here, so somebody might wanna check on the school traffic, and they also, they may drop kids in the middle of the day there, and having had two kids who informed me after the fact of how exciting the inside of that building was, that they should be aware of that. And just to verify, we're planning only a seven-day time for the 24/7 operation?
Five days.
Five days.
Yeah, five days, yeah.
Five days. Okay, I gotta make my travel plans, you know.
Five to six. Again, it's a, it is a complex building, so hopefully three, if all goes well.
1981, I worked in there.
That's great, thank you. Any more questions from the public? Peter, come on up.
One other question, you know, we've been told that there's going to be wetting for dust and also for hazardous material. Where does all that water run off to, and has the Conservation Commission been consulted in this, and is there gonna be some protection to the river, so that pollution doesn't get into the river?
Yeah, Joe, you can fill it in, but the Conservation Commission has been involved in this whole process, along with the DEP, but Joe, if you wanna expand on that?
Yes, the Conservation Commission has been involved, and they have, they have a strict order of conditions that they have to go by. Actually, some of that protection has been put in place, whereas protective netting, for lack of a better term, has been put into the sewer basins, the drainage basins already, and we expect that there be very minimal runoff from the site. In it, in wetting down the building, it's not going to be, it's not gonna be torrential wetting, it's a spray of the building as it comes down. And as Larry said, it's not, it's not wrecking ball type demolition, this is carefully picked and placed on the ground, and they have to sort this, they have to sort the different materials, so it's reasonably well-controlled.
Okay. Any more questions from the public? Okay, so from this point on, we're gonna be giving regular updates through the Town Administrator's Office on anything that does come about, but we feel this is a very good and thoughtful plan. We've gone through all of the steps that have been needed, we've worked very well with the Conservation Commission, as just stated, and I think that, you know, this is something that the town will be proud of at the very end, and I think it's been a long time coming. So, Michael, if you wanna add anything else logistically?
No, just that, as you said, Mr. Chairman, the updates will be given when we have more concrete planners to Phase Two and confirmation from the T that everything is in agreement, then we'll announce that. If people would like to have a public meeting to talk about Phase Two, we can, but again, my phone's on, email, if you have any questions that you don't think of tonight or you don't wanna raise tonight, send them our way, and then, until then, we're looking forward to the first week of April, tentatively, and getting this going, April 2nd would be.
And we're more than happy to host another public meeting. I think the more information and the better we communicate with the public and with the residents and abutters is paramount. So let's look forward to moving this along in a timely manner. We'll come up with some more updates. We'll potentially host another, another public meeting for Phase Two, but I wanna thank you all again for coming out tonight, especially during this weather. You know, as Michael said, we are open for questions any point in time, you can email us, call us, and we will respond, you know, as soon as possible. So I wanna thank you all again, I wanna thank my colleagues, I wanna thank Town Administrator, Building Commissioner, folks from RIS and the Conley family for coming out as well tonight.
Katie, you have any, I just one comment, but do you have anything for us?
No, you go ahead.
I just wanna say that I know that when the gentleman said that he worked in Hendry's in 1981, and in 1981, I worked across the street of Fallon Ambulance, and I had worked, that was my second job, my first job in that neighborhood was when I was 15 at the Getty Station, and there was a time when, you know, Hendry's was the most vibrant business in that business district. And for most of you here tonight, Hendry's represents a negative to that, to that neighborhood, but I'm confident that from the work of my colleagues and boards, and I can tell you, especially in Joe Prondick, going back to when I was chief, I don't know how many conversations we've had on this, and I can tell the excitement and the interest that people have in doing this, in bringing this final piece, this essential piece to bringing this neighborhood back to what you want it to be. I know you want a vibrant, really special Central Ave business district and neighborhood, and I, this is one big step towards that, so thank you for your patience. I know that, and I say to Mr. Mullin, you waited a long time, I don't know how many meetings I've listened to you speak at on this, so this is a big step tonight.
Not only Peter, but Ellen as well, and many others.
Yes, both of you, yeah, just, I think that from the town's part, having been chief for so long and now being a selectman, I can see the interest in the detail that so many people are giving on the town side to make sure this happens on your behalf, and I think it's gonna be a good thing. I think, I'm very pleased with the way it's moving right now, so.
Yeah, those are very good points, and thank you, Richard, and I think that, you know, there will be some inconvenience, but I think communication is the key. I think that if you communicate your inconvenience to us, we will help rectify that problem. I think we wanna work with the abutters, we wanna work with the neighbors, we'll work with the businesses. It is, as Richard said, it's going to be the gateway to Milton from that side, it's something that we're all gonna be proud of, but I think that the better we communicate and work together, the better we'll get this done, and the less inconvenience, I think, in the end we'll have, and, you know, hearing good questions about the schools and the school buses, yes, we have coordinated efforts within all departments, but those are good questions, and we wanna keep hearing from you. So, you know, if there's something that you're unsatisfied about, please let us know, because we wanna fix that problem, and that's, that's our goal.
I'd just like to add that when the Conservation Commission was holding a lot of meetings on these orders of conditions, one member of the Conservation Commission, in response to questions about noise and dust and underground storage tanks and all the things that all the people tonight have raised, said, "In order to make an omelet, you have to break some eggs." And we're gonna go through a period where it's probably gonna be a little bit inconvenient to some of the immediate abutters in particular, and the business owners, but the end result is gonna be a very good anchor building for this business district, and that's why so many people put in so much time on this, to make sure that what we got here was the right result for the town, since it's a gateway, and hopefully whatever is built will be there for 50 or 100 years, so we wanted to really make sure that we got this right. It's an important business district.
Sure is. Again, I wanna thank you all, and I wanna, wanna hope that we are all shoveling out tomorrow morning and that it stays the rain, so happy and safe travels home tonight, and look forward to hearing for some updates from us. Thanks again.